Welcome to Central Texas College Word of God workshop, September 10th, October 2021. We will have Mr. Oliver in December. A prayer, we will have Mr. Oliver, he is the president of the Texas Department of Defense. And Oliver, just request the Texas word.
Join me if you will. Our heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together here today to do our civic duty and to set the path for others to follow. Thank you for bringing me back from the edge. I can feel all of your grace for me. Forgive us when we have fallen short of the gumption that you would have us to, to guide, direct us, and look at us and all of our extended families. In Jesus' name, the Lord speaks and says, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
The Lord is the King of the United States of America and the Republic of America. He is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honor of the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag, our blessed citizens of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. We have a call on present, and this meeting is being recorded. It is made available to the public on the Central Texas College website. Item two on agenda is an opportunity for members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion or to address topics of concern. With a limitation of three minutes. Is there anyone to address the floor? Seeing none, then we move right on. I've asked out of an agenda as a chancellor update.
Thanks, sir. I have a few things uncovered. First is the TACC Fall Retreat, which is going on right now. It was all day yesterday and all day today until 10:00 tonight. I won't be there because it's after midnight here. But I wanted to be down there because a lot of things have come up lately in the last couple of days with the legislative session, going into special session, and that is the dollars that we were hoping to receive from the state of Texas and from the feds in terms of COVID relief. So our original ask was for $100 million for all 50 community colleges. That would have been $2 million a year for each of us for the next two years. That failed. And I talked to Brad, I guess the day before yesterday, and he voted for it in favor of it. He was supporting. I talked to Tom Buckingham from our office, they were very supportive. So that wasn't an issue. It came out of the House. Somehow it wasn't supported, and the money all went to the university. So they got 325 million, and the community colleges got zero. We had some, we kicked around some thoughts, and some of the thinking was that until we can prove, I don't know how we're going to do this, until we can prove that our programs are instrumental in the community and they actually make a difference in the community, and I'm talking about automotive, welding, nursing, police officers and stuff like that. We can show a lot of that, but until we can, as a group of 50 community colleges, really show that to the state, there's some reluctance to support us. It's sort of like, well, they're doing the job anyway. We really don't need to give them any money. They have a tax base, they can go after them, they can raise taxes, and they can raise tuition, and so we don't need to do that. That was part of the thinking. We thought that the committee had, who was chaired by, I think James, it was Jared Wilson out of Georgetown. And as you know, Georgetown doesn't have a community college. They piggyback off of Boston Community College. They also piggyback off of Temple College, who has the campus in Huddle and Taylor and some other places I think I remember. So, and we don't know him, and he doesn't have a community college. So we don't know what his, what his thinking was and what was taking that. We also found out that the commissioner really wasn't supportive, but this because of these metrics, he would like us to see. He's a university guy. He came here to visit with us, we know him, worked with his mother for 30 years. But he, and he said, you know, what I'm looking for in community colleges is certificates, certifications, licensures, and those kinds of things. Not so much interested in degrees, although they really like when we have the transfer programs to the universities. That gets their attention. But, so we've got some work to do. The other area is that there is a commission that was formed this year, being formed. And I can't remember if it's a 10-person commission, but it's the Legislative Commission on Community Colleges. And so we think that that had something to do with their thinking. In other words, well, if this commission gets formed, then they're going to become as for dollars. And so we do have two college presidents on on that commission. One is Brenda Hellier out of San Jacinto Community College down in Volkeria. The other is Mark Misscomedia, I think it's Texas South Most. Those two are on that committee. We had long conversations with them yesterday and last night with the both of them. So we have some strategies that we're going to try to employ and see what we can do. But to answer your question, I have yet to ask you, we did not get any, we're not getting any of that. We're not getting the $100 million, so we're not getting the $2 million. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about that before we move on. Okay. Vista College, there's been a lot of scuffle about Vista College for the last few days. We reached out to Vista College and said, hey, you know, we understand that you want the disclosure, can we help you? Dr. Garrett, I brought the president, you're up back, and I have Dr. Garrett's phone, my address and phone number and so forth. And they've been in contact, and she's been working with Vista College to do what she can do, and looking at our programs with Dr. Edie Seb and faculty to look at those programs and analyze what we can do to save some of those students. We've been very active. She's going to, I guess, like, she's gonna, she will give you a report next month. She'll be gone today and next Tuesday. So she's on the road, and she's got some things going on. And remember, she's going to give you the full report on Vista College and what committed we did. And we have been working with her students. She told me the other day, so she's been working with her students. So that's a positive thing. Yes, ma'am?
The articles in the newspaper have been very complimentary, the CTC and all of the staff that's working with those students, both on the TV, on TV and newspaper, online also. Almost every day, there's some mention of what's happening, what CTC is doing to support them.
Thank you for sharing that. And they're having, I know that Jean and her staff and Barbara, they're probably, Barbara and I have put together those articles. So we thank them for that. Two other things, Thanksgiving Day meal, the 25th day, Thanksgiving Day meal will be Thursday, November the, Tuesday, November 9th, which is like, what, how many weeks is that? Two weeks, three weeks, three. And Mr. Gonzalez told me earlier that he gets here for you next Tuesday at the board meeting, and then you get your tickets to participate in our Thanksgiving Day. And they're giving, it's on the table. In addition, moving on to the November board meeting. At the November board meeting, we need to consider next, at this board meeting, I'd like to consider moving that workshop on the 16th, as we're just scheduled, keeping it there, but possibly moving the board meeting to November 30th. That would be moving it down one additional week because Thanksgiving week is in the middle. I think that gives, I think that gives our Mr. Liberty and Dr. Carter time to put together the budget and all that kind of thing, and get some things from our monitor. So that gives them a little more time to prepare for that. So that is a consideration. And then in December, December 14th is scheduled, the workshop and board meeting on the same day, or not having at all, I mean, that's an option. So, but because of the holidays, we break, I think, on December 17th. And so consider we do a board meeting and a workshop on the same day. I've asked the staff to please push everything they can to November, so there wouldn't really be a whole lot unless it's an emergency kind of thing that might pop up for the December meeting. That doesn't give you the weekend there to consider either options, but at least we want to work, be everything done in November. Those are considerations, Mr. Chair, and it's up to you in the board. And that concludes my remarks.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, Mr. Oliver? Next on the agenda is the Office Technology Board Committee, Mr. Oliver.
Good afternoon. We have two staff members here that are doing presentations back to back. The first one is by Dr. Gonzalez, Rosa Gonzalez. She is our Office Technology Department Chair. She is not new to CTC. She has been teaching here for a while, for a number of years. And so we are excited to see her, the role of Office Technology Chair. So she will give you updates on enrollments and different initiatives. And following her is Dean Rasan Dawson. He came on board at the end of March, and as soon as he came, he had an agenda, and let me tell you, I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but you will hear right things that are happening, continuing in, developed in, in service area. So lots of things to share with you. So, Dr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Edie, and hello, everyone. So just want to share with you an overview of our programs. We offer 11 certificates or degrees, eight certificates exactly, two associate's degrees. They are administered in stackable form. That is, as students complete one certificate, they have a clean exit out, or they may continue to the next certificate, which then leads to the associate's degree. We offer our programs in several formats, that is, online, face-to-face, blended. But one of our most popular programs is CATE Center. That's where students enter a class or enroll in a class on any given Monday. They can finish anytime after two weeks of enrolling in that class, as long as that class does not exceed 16 weeks. They are free to move on to the next class as soon as they're done. So here's a breakdown of our enrollments from pre-pandemic, which I'm calling Fall 2019. Nobody knew, or at least I didn't know, anything was brewing. I'll let you see those numbers there, and I'm going to give you an overall summary of what it is you're looking at. So between Fall of 2019 and Fall 2020, we had a total loss of enrollments of 29. But what you'll notice from the chart is that we gained 28 enrollments online, although we lost 57 enrollments in our CATE Center. So CATE Center courses are facilitated face-to-face. What we believe happened is some of our students simply went online. Others were holding out for the day when we would reopen. By the March shutdown, students were already enrolled in Spring 2020 courses, and so that number is pretty true to form what was happening. So I call this cross pandemic. We were already enrolled, spring break happened, we returned. So our CATE Center numbers were pretty okay, but we did lose a few enrollments there. But overall, between the academic year 2019 and 2020, we had 1,993 enrollments. Compare that to the academic year 2020 and 2021, we had 1,910 enrollments. That was an overall decrease of 83 enrollments, but only 4%. And so we feel pretty confident that with this post-pandemic, and I'm not sure how close it is just yet, that we'll see those numbers begin to increase again. If you take a look at 2021, 2022, you'll notice a number in green. That's our CATE Center enrollment. Now, just for the purpose of this presentation, we're calling traditional anything outside of the CATE Center. That CATE Center number is in green because even as we speak, students are completing courses and enrolling in other courses. So by the end of this semester, we're expecting that number to be significantly higher. You'll also notice that we're already three enrollments beyond where we were during the pandemic. That's promising, I think so. And so again, I think we're moving in the right direction, and we'll certainly hit that goal by the end of the semester. Just throwing this in for your information, we are nearly 54 enrollments away from where we were pre-pandemic. So we are happy to see these students, and in fact, we have enrolled a few of those, and we have another few on the horizon, so look for these numbers to keep climbing. As I said, that CATE Center number, it is always changing. So let's talk about what we're doing right now. We have looked at Cambridge College for an articulation agreement, just as another pathway for our students to get a bachelor's degree in medical administrative field. We're expecting that to be finalized before the end of this term. We also started, and just in the nick of time, looking at the course syllabi for VISA and their medical programs, and how they might transfer to our programs. And once more, we've already seen some of those students enroll, and we expect many more too. Dean Dawson will talk about this in just a minute. But the true institutional capacity for a true standing for the Texas, we scaling and upselling education. We're collaborating with him to offer our medical billing program to students in rural areas specifically in Fredericksburg. And so we hope to hear something really embarrassing about the outcome of that. If things turn out bad, and hopefully they will, we can expect more enrollments for this spring semester. Any questions for me? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Your report.
Thank you.
No, Ted, we want to talk about you. Next on our agenda is the Adult and Workforce Education Department update. Mr. Oliver.
Good afternoon, everyone. As said, my name is Rasan Dawson. Turn up the mic here a little bit. Okay. And I am the dean for Adult and Workforce Education. So good afternoon to Chancellor Benoplis and also to the distinguished board members. I get the privilege of kind of giving a general update as it relates to what we have been doing and the initiatives that we have been able to launch with the help of an amazing team. So some I have had the privilege of inheriting, and then others we have had the privilege of adding. So I would like to start, I would like to start with this quote. This quote is actually not something that I created. It was found in the hall of the building that I occupy. It is faded from the sun, but I was able to take a picture of it with my cellphone, and I thought this quote absolutely captures why I think I'm here and what I think we can do. And that is the idea of one's mind. Once that new idea is there, it is stretched, and it never gets the privilege of going backward, but it only gets the opportunity to go forward. And I think that that is the foundation for the work that we have been able to do in the areas that I'm responsible for. And in order to do new ideas, sometimes you need new people. So I have had the privilege of adding to the team Dr. Carolyn Rego for the continuing education, Tara Lukar, sorry, for the Gatesville Site Director, and Aurora Gonzalez, who reports for the adult education in these critical roles. And that has been exciting. Now let's kind of talk about some of the areas. One, we'll start with the service area. Now, this is a very simple breakdown of the trend that is currently going on, but we know that these numbers reflect, as we have already heard, about the two key things for the community college. And one is the COVID-19 and the impact on that. I'm responsible for the rural areas, and as you all know, rural areas were hit even harder, more dramatic than the typical more concentrated urbanized areas. So that had an impact. The other part is that during the COVID-19 and/or on the heels of it, we had a neighboring university who tapped into a grant, and with that grant, they were able to offer a very inexpensive dual credit. And with that, they were able to take some of that enrollment or those opportunities. Well, I see all on your face. Well, how did we respond to that? I got you. Let me show you how. So what we're going to do is we're going to focus on not what we cannot do, but let's expand on what we can do and do it darn well and do it way better than what anyone else can do. That's the strategy. First, we're going to strengthen our dual credit. And you strengthened a dual credit through relationship in talking to the chancellor. That was one of the key things for me to do, was to go out to the ISVs and build relationships. The other thing that we can do, we can't compete on price, so we can't compete on service. And being there and being available for all of the counselors and the superintendents and the principals has paid off really well. And that has given us an opportunity to maintain some of the academic dual credit. But the other part that we do well is we do career and technical education really well here and locally. How do we now expand upon that and create opportunities for career and technical education on the dual credit track? The goal is, the students are already participating in a number of those programs. Let us see how we can match and give college credit to those same activities such as welding, and some are doing CNA and CMA, and some of the other programs that are out there in our high schools. How do we then capitalize on that? So we get an opportunity, and thankfully, all of our partners are very open and very willing to do that, to create those pathways. Right now, we're working with Landpasses for the Culinary Arts Program, because they have an amazing culinary arts program. They also have automotive and welding as well. So we are looking at being able to expand upon that, and also their EMT program. And with the EMT program, at some point in time, we'll give it opportunity to partner with them and a local third-party organization that can provide the dual credit training. The next component is expanding what it means to be non-credit or continuing education. And right now, what we do is we have an opportunity to expand what the site directors are providing as an inventory of courses and programs. Currently, in Marble Falls, we have a CMA class with 13 students in it, and we have Marble Falls that has a pharmacy tech program that now has 11 students in that program. So those things provide an opportunity for us to increase our portfolio and what we're providing and offering to our service area. Okay? And one of the other components of this is that we get an opportunity to expand on our reporting, because right now, in the current structure that we're in, we're not able to demonstrate the current site enrollments. So we're looking to expand that so that when we get the report throughout the campus, there is a true indication of the numbers in terms of non-credits as well as credit, because we all know that students need steps and process, and they may need a credential in order to land a job so that they can continue in their education. And we want to be flexible and nimble and provide that. Lastly, the other part is we know that a lot of our areas, particularly in our rural areas, are in need of literacy and literacy support. And we at the college have a grant already that we work in and function in and have done so for some time. This gives us an opportunity to offer that service to all of our ISVs, and we have a number of them that are providing space for us and room for us so that we can provide GED and EXL support in education. So this broadens our portfolio and gives us an opportunity to serve the ISV and to serve the community as well. Next, we'll look at continuing and adult education. And here, we have the opportunity for growth as well. And what we have done in CE is partner with third-party vendors to quickly expand on the programs that we can offer in an effort to meet the immediate allied health needs within our rural areas. They are looking for professionals, and they're looking for skills, and we are able to meet that need and then scale up or back depending on their need. And this minimizes the initial investment, but then it can maximize our investment as we scale up or back depending on what is taking place there. The other part is that in our rural areas, we have the opportunity to offer a number of different programs in an effort to meet their needs, and then provide and produce new allied health programs that we currently are not offering here on central campus, but it gives us an opportunity to launch into those things. And that is exciting news, and we're really, really happy about that. The other component is our workforce education. Right now, we are looking to make sure that our CE programs are credit-worthy. And what that means is that we want to look at the teachers, the faculty, the curriculum, and all of the content to ensure that at least there is some degree of institutional integration for the student, that if they take our CMA, CE credit, non-credit program, that at some point they can translate into a LBN program or another nursing program or continue on. And we're looking to do the same in all of these different areas, but we know that we have to work on ourselves internally as well. And additionally, when we think about workforce programs, we think about our Forward Technicians of Tomorrow program that we have. Right now, we're looking at it, making assessments, and we're looking at the industry standard of it, as well as the CE programming component, to ensure that it meets that quality output that we are all very much interested in producing. And in connection to workforce, and when it comes to adult education, we have an intensive program that we are providing and expanding so that students who are in the process of expanding in their English have the opportunity to participate in the CATE Center and some of the other programs. So they are dual enrolled. They are getting a vocation and at the same time adding that English as a second language training and learning. In addition, in adult education, we are expanding what is called the International Professional Program. And what that does is those who transfer to America, but they are already credential professionals, they some have a They some have a doctorate degree, some have are doctors, some are lawyers in their other countries, but they are needing support when they transfer to America and they live here. So we're targeting them in an effort to provide support and to connect them to resources as well as provide additional ESL education for those things that are going on. Lastly, in adult ed, we're focusing on literacy right now. Literacy is a big deal. We took the National Literacy Week as a springboard to begin to focus on literacy. We were able to do a book drive, which was very exciting. And in the book drive, we do have a, and I'm not gonna announce right now, which is on, but I'm not gonna announce it right now. But we were able to gather over a thousand books. And with that, we were able to create a little library. And that little library will eventually be placed by the Duck Pond. And what that means for us is that every visitor that comes to the Duck Pond, particularly children, are impacted by our literacy and the books that they can take there. And we have enough backstop so that they can take them and run. And the goal of it again is to impact all of our students and their children when it comes to literacy. All right, in connection to children, we want to expand in the area of our College for Kids. For us, College for Kids is a way to change the college-going identity of all of our kids within our area, to make college fun and accessible. And the way we're doing that is, one, we're expanding it to not just be offered here at Central Campus, but we're doing it at all of our service areas. What that means, of course, is enrollment, but what it also means is that we get an opportunity to impact little children with what it means to be a CTC college student. And that can go a long way in terms of branding and it can go a long ways in terms of transforming, again, what that means to find college that is fun and accessible. The other part is we're offering College for Kids all year around. So we have classes that are going on in the fall and in the spring and of course, our major camps in the summer. We have programs like babysitting and CPR in some of those other areas. We are launching in new partnerships. And with the new partnership, gives us an opportunity to expand our services, but also in connection to that, target specific demographics. And that gives us an opportunity to tailor some of our programming to meet those particular needs. And our focus is on career pathways. And so all of our programs, like we offered last year, were police and fire and we're doing animal science and some of these other programs because again, we want to connect it to that career path. Lastly, what we have done this year is participated in Rural Healthcare Initiative Grant. We're one of the principal trainers and providers in that grant. That gives us an opportunity to partner with the Rural Workforce Board and offer allied health programs because that is what they're interested in. So that takes care of Marble Falls, Fredericksburg, and Landpasses. In the future, we have applied for these other grants, which we talked about, which is the True Grant. In the True Grant, it gives us an opportunity to target the rural area with expanded allied health programming. And we get an opportunity to partner with all of our credit partners as well as our outside partners to make sure that we can provide a strong allied health program, again, that leads to a pathway for employment or continued education. Our fees are our costs. We do have a partnership in that grant with Brazelport College. And the target for that is looking at the non-credit programs and how they make pathways to those credit opportunities. We have the Second Chance Hell Grant that we're interested in, that we've applied for, the Governor's Summer Merit Grant. We were awarded it last year as the initial pilot. And we were very successful in that, so we've expanded that. And now we're focusing on STEM camps in all of our service areas. And we have a number of ISVs that are wanting to partner with us on that. We have an Neon Reality Grant, which is focused on alternate reality. And it gives us an opportunity to expand what we're offering so students don't have to look at just textbooks, but they get an opportunity to look at a heart three-dimensionally, four-dimensionally, through glasses and some of these other more current technology. And that begins to elevate the idea of learning. We have a meeting tomorrow in regards to that. And then, lastly, we have the Community College Trustee and Education Strategy Group Grant. And that looks at pathways from non-credit to credit. And that is all the fun we have been doing over there. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions.
Question?
I don't have a question, but I would like to comment about what two great presentations these were. And we appreciate, this is just further evidence of what great people we have in CTC. And I'd like to encourage you to do more if you can. You've given so much energy to this and a great force for CTC. Thank you very much.
I'd like to comment on that and thank you Dean Dawson, great presentation. If you can't get excited about these two individuals, I think you're sleeping, okay?
Dean Dawson, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we're reaching out to the rural areas. That's kind of near and dear to my heart. And it gives them an opportunity, those students that you want to reach that don't see an out from their small town. They don't have the transportation or the money to get to main campus or any campus, really. So I applaud you and I look forward to hearing more about that area, the areas that you've accomplished, the goals that you've set. It was a great presentation.
Thank you, thank you. It is important to target the rural population. They do have real tangible barriers. And part of our mission here is to provide access to quality instruction regardless of your location. So we have to take that mandate very seriously. And we have to make that applicable for them, and we are willing to do that. And it's been exciting to make that happen.
Any other questions, Mr. Dawson?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to pour an attended the Texas Materials Group corporate asphalt maintenance.
Good afternoon. I'll do my best to try to make this just as exciting as the presentation. We have a number of streets throughout campus that are in need of repair or replacement, fortunately. A number of them, which is primarily along Bell Tower Drive and Success Way. And it does include Lot R, which is just to the south of us. We, if you recall, we had a board approval for Texas Materials last month. We have a contract with them that was originally established through an RFP several years ago. The total estimated cost for this work will not exceed $600,000. So we will be bringing it forward at the board meeting. Next, we need a recommendation to have Texas Materials Group complete this asphalt work.
Question, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir. Believe it or not, last week I had someone actually call me about that. The roads are really rough here. It's coming. Just stand by, it's coming.
Yeah, especially if you get over by the Technology Center where the planetarium is. That area there is, I think, not the best. We don't unfortunately have enough dollars because the next worst section of road is along Central Texas College Drive in front of the nursing building and stuff. But we will pick that up in a future project. But this at least will take care of the main access along Bell Tower to campus.
Do you have questions? Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are you still up there? Tell us about the Clean Field Incorporated contract option.
Yes, we use Clean Field for geotechnical services throughout campus. The contract period for them is gonna be December 1st, 2021 through November 30th. But I wanted to bring it a little bit earlier because we have a number of projects, including the asphalt work that we may be utilizing them for. They do soil sampling, they do compaction tests, they do inspections for wells and other things. We're gonna look at utilizing them for inspections up to the elevator project as well. The estimated spend for this option period is not to, will not exceed $100,000. Certainly, that depends on campus conditions, but I think we're fairly comfortable at this point that it should be less than that. So we'll be bringing forward a recommendation for approval for Clean Field for geotechnical services.
Any questions, Ms. Thompson? Thanks, sir. On the next item, I rate this sponsorship pool, Mr. Sandler.
Good afternoon, Chairman, we're board trustees and Captain DeAnnaples. For the record, number reasonable. And I'm here in accordance with CTC Board document number 427. As you know, the CTC Board of Trustees provides sponsorship funds for events, projects, and activities selected at the beginning of each fiscal year. Community partners and nonprofits, organizations, and service clubs submit funding requests. The CTC Sponsorship Committee evaluates these requests and the CTC Board of Trustees approves amounts of $2,500 or greater. Today, we are presenting four sponsorship requests recommended by the Sponsorship Committee. The requests exceed the amount. These organizations, the four organizations providing for Texas College with publicity, advertising, and they highlight CTC's contributions in their newsletters and on their websites to their memberships. The first one is Advent Health. The request is for $3,000. The sponsorship request is for the Gold Star Gala on Thursday, November 4th, 2021, at the Colleen Civic and Conference Center. The Sponsorship Committee recommends a bronze level at $3,000. The sponsorship includes a reserved table debate and CTC listing in all their publication materials. Any questions on this one? The next one is the Central Texas Business Resource Center, known as the DRC Center. That one's for $30,000. And that one, CTC collaborates with the workforce solution of the Central Texas Board and Greater Colleen Chamber. The parties agreed to serve Central Texas residents by providing financial and in-kind support to the Central Texas Business Center. Central Texas College and the MOU assign staff to serve on the steering committee and ensure active participation to that staff. CTC also provides professional assistance, including counseling and curriculum support, supporting business assistance and development. CTC also provides information and referral services that encourage the effective and efficient exchange of information between training providers, businesses, and job seekers. As you know, the DRC, the Business Resource Center, provides high-quality counseling and assistance to potential and existing small business owners. Next one is the Harker Heights Chamber. That one's for $2,500. The Harker Heights Chamber provides value-added services, programming, and leadership to accelerate the demand for programs to deliver to the community. The Sponsorship Committee, the CTC Sponsorship Committee, recommends sponsoring the Chairman's Circle at the Gold Level. The benefits of the Gold Level include priority seating at Chamber events, signage at Chamber events, visibility in the Business Matters e-newsletter, recognition on the Chamber website, and the private Chamber Circle recognition events. The next one is the Colleen Independent School District Foundation, and they request us for $3,000. The Colleen Independent School District Education Foundation enhances the educational environment with resources for innovative classroom experiences, recognize student achievement, and provide educators professional recognition and enrichment. The sponsorship request for the Distinctive Alumni and Student Scholarship Reception and Award Ceremony honors post-KISD students who have majority impacted their communities after high school graduation. This request includes using the Anderson Campus Center on Thursday, March 24th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. until 8:30 p.m. It includes setup and cleanup times. The $3,000 primarily is for the Great Western Valiant Services for light refreshments and light food for up to 350 people. I'm open for any questions.
Any question, Mr. Sandler?
Thanks, sir.
I agree. The last item we're discussing is the Bell County Tax and Quayside District Board of Directors. Opinions. Do you have a question, sir? Go ahead. Did you stay there or what? Didn't hear.
It wasn't working out there a while ago, so what? If I'd always caught it, I'd be mine, but anyway. Trying to tie this ever, you know, it is going in the background. And Ms. Thompson, and the presentation I was on ago. Is there any way or anything we need to try to stay abreast of the infrastructure that's being batted around in Congress and by President Biden? In other words, you know, we might need to work with the county and start in the rural areas and help out to improve something, get some bucks. I don't know over there yet, but it's so far reaching, I think it's something to sign up.
I sit on the SICOG board. And we've invited, talked to Dr. Bar about this. We've invited a couple of our staff to sit and meet some of those staff and talk about some of those opportunities. The opportunities exist to the west. We have six of the counties of the seven along to Central Texas College, if you will. We split Bell County with Temple College. So Temple College has East Bell County, we have West Bell County. So we're gonna try to engage SICOG to expand and provide opportunities in the future in those counties to help support us. So I think that's where you're going with that, Tom.
Yes, sir.
We are.
Thank you.
Okay. We have been approached by the Texas President District of Bell County to provide someone to represent us and our, some of the board directors. The President District serving a two-year term beginning January 1st. This is a long even number of years. If I look back at the minutes, Ms. Haven's was so kind to look back at nominations in 2019, and we did not nominate anyone to represent us. So I need the board meeting on Tuesday for your recommendation either to have somebody appointed or ask somebody or let it go and not appoint anybody. It's this time.
Is there, Jim, is there an advantage or disadvantage about having or not having a member on that meeting?
Well, all of the people that are represented as quote-unquote the lesser are taxing authorities.
taxing authorities, say that'd be us and the board of board and a couple of others. We can nominate one person to represent all of us when it comes to the meeting, presenting the tax rates and the president district and so forth. We need to be represented there, probably. But it's one of those kinds of things you need to volunteer. You can't do one of our employees. That's the bad one. You have to have somebody that's quote-unquote representing us as a taxing entity entity, but not one of our employees. So if you've got anybody in mind, will you vote that out next time on the meeting? Make those nominations. This is for the Bell County. We did the one for Corel County already, if you recall. This is for Bell County.
Okay, so Tuesday, we'll... I might have some... Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Yeah, next Tuesday, we can or cannot make an nomination, but I just wanted to... If you have somebody in mind, contact them, assume that they're willing to be nominated. That's the key.
I think this resolution, I read the course with the resolution that were passed by the board of directors at their May 18, 2021 meeting. The selection process essentially is the same in Bell County. City of Colleen, Colleen ISD, city of Temple, Temple ISD, appoint one member each to the board of directors. The city of Belton, the Belton ISD, appoint one member. And all of their taxing units jointly appoint the seventh member.
That's us.
And that includes the River Academy, all of those small places in Bell County. That's him, three, five, and one.
And good green sausage houses.
You got it.
That's right. So if anybody wants to make somebody forward, nominate, that's our job as trustees is to find out what we're doing. No, I believe it last year we just passed them. So we'll group that up next week.
And I believe they have to be elected officials, is that right, Mr. Perez?
I believe so.
elected official. Okay. Thank you.
Last item is the announcement of regular board meetings and workshops. You've been seeing the proposal, the calendar is patched out for everybody on your desk. The proposal is for a workshop on the 16th of November and a proposed board meeting for the 30th of November. And then a combined workshop followed by a board reading on 40th of December. We don't have to vote on that today, but we need to make that consideration. Does anybody have any objections to that schedule? I guess that's what I need to ask. Does anybody oppose to that? Anybody have a comment, like, say, no? They won't rank this out for a vote at our next meeting. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 26th, at 1:00 p.m. And does anybody have any recommendations for topics for the assembly and agenda for the announcements? Seeing now, Mr. James.